We have tonight to the March 9, 2020, meeting of your Board of Selectmen. I call the meeting to order. The first thing on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise as you are able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have the minutes of February 25. I've been informed by my colleagues that we are not ready to approve those yet. There have been some additions that need to be reflected in the copy before us, so we're going to hold off on that approval. There are seats up in the front if folks need those, and there's some more seats here on the side. There's a seat over here. Public comment for items not on the agenda this evening? Yes, sir?
Hi, Tom Patch.
Tom, if you could come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Tom Patch, Ship Street. I'm here just out of, just to comment, I'm sure the Board's been working on this, but with the historic, historically low bond rates that are occurring right now, I know you're working on the Water Company and at the acquisition price, but I just ran some quick numbers and to urge you to move as quickly as you can to do the borrowing, to fund this acquisition. And by way of example, the Anderson report that the Board relied on in pursuing the acquisition assumed a rate of 3.75% for 29 years.
Correct.
And I think that might, and correct me if I'm wrong, it might have been that there was going to be a one-year purchase and then a funding for the balance of the 29 years. Well, at 29 years, at 3.75%, assuming $125 million, and I'm not saying that's the right price, but assuming that, the interest would be $80 million, and roughly. And today, on Bloomberg, basic for AAA muni bonds, the market rate was 1.5%. So even though the Anderson report characterized the town's assumption as both reasonable and conservative as far as the interest rate, we're really at these historic rates, low rates. And so 29 years, just 29 years at $125 million, at 1.5% is $29 million in interest. So we're talking a huge difference, $51 million in interest. So I would urge the Board to move forward on that as fast as possible, but also consider, instead of just doing the one year and then the 29 years, to move right into a 30-year because we may not have these rates if we move to a 29-year a year down the road.
Thank you. So we need to be careful when we respond to discuss things that come up as part of the comments section because it's not posted on our agenda. And Ms. Power has been working hard on the topic that Mr. Patch has put before us tonight. I am going to ask Mary to comment very briefly. I will suggest to you that we have been discussing this in public sessions as part of our open, posted public meetings from time to time. And Mary, as the liaison to the Water Acquisition, has been meeting on an ongoing basis with capital market advisors, which as you may know is the financial advisor to the town. So, Mr. Patch, I appreciate it. It is something that we are monitoring very closely, and I'll ask Mary to respond very briefly to that.
Thank you for the question. Over the last few weeks, the town has actually been in discussion with bond council and with the town financial advisors because of the historic low interest rates. We are looking into the possibility of going right into the long-term market because, as Mr. Patch has suggested, the interest rate savings for the ratepayers over 30 years are considerable.
Thank you, Mary. Any further, thanks, Mr. Patch. Any further public comment for items that are not on the agenda this evening? Seeing none, we will move to the National Grid update. Do we have a representative from National Grid?
Yes.
If you could join us at the table, sir?
I'm sorry?
Yeah. You could state your name and affiliation for the record.
So my name is Dennis McCaffrey. I'm a customer and community manager with National Grid. So I'm here tonight. We've had a couple of meetings. We have a project pending on Route 228 in Hingham. It's really the second phase of a large main replacement project. First phase was done about two years ago. I'm sure most of the people that had to drive the street remember it. This is the second phase. It's about 8,000 feet. We want to replace that main. It's, we, National Grid has an overall program of replacing our at-risk main, and this is one of the ones we targeted. We met twice so far regarding this with the DPW. The last meeting we had was at Town Hall on the 27th, and the administration, along with police and fire, suggested we come here tonight and let you know what, a little bit more about the project. I'm going to have, if I can, have Nelson come up here. He's the project manager, so he can help address any questions. We hope to start within a few days. I know you've seen the signboards out there about the project, and we're also posting FAQs and some project details on your website.
Can you just tell us a little bit about individual neighborhood notification with door hangers and the like as you move down 228?
Yeah, you want to take that, Nelson?
Yeah, sure. My name is Nelson P. I work for National Grid. So National Grid is, you know, energy plays a huge part of our lives. National Grid is committed to the safety and, you know, delivery of our gas infrastructure. So most of our infrastructure is roughly about 100 years old. You know, it's at risk, so the purpose of this project is to replace all of our leak-prone pipe. We have notified our, you know, the residents within the limits of work. That notification should have been sent out maybe three weeks ago. We will be starting at Short Street, and we're going to be working our way north. It's going to be broken up in three phases up till about 3A. I think it's close to the intersection of Elizabeth Lane. And at that point, once we, so, once we start our project, we're going to go out there, we're going to mark out our facility, we're going to do some investigation, some test holes and some verification holes to locate all of our services and mains within the scope of work. At that point, once we complete that, we're going to move on to installing main. Once the main is installed and energized, we're going to begin services at that point. You know, the foreman should contact all of the residents within the impacted area and start some, to start the service transfers. Once the service transfers are complete and all the main connections are completed, you know, we're going to kill the main and move on to another project.
Great, thank you. Joe, particular questions?
What sort of noise, if any, should the affected neighborhood expect?
So we're hoping that the project's going to last roughly about five months. So the biggest factor is if we encounter ledge. Ledge is an unknown factor until we get out there and start doing some test holes. You know, if the digging goes well and we have, you know, suitable materials, hopefully within four to five months, most of the project should be completed. We're going to be working from the hours of 7:00 PM to 5:00 AM, Sunday through Friday. We're going to begin on Monday night, you know, for the beginning of the project. If we do at some point encounter ledge, we'll probably mobilize a second crew to, you know, speed up the project and fast-track it. If we do encounter ledge, I'm pretty sure that at that point, we'll probably limit our working hours to about midnight, and at that point allow the residents to, you know, have a decent night's sleep.
You've anticipated my next question, so, thank you.
Yes, so just a comment on that. We did hit ledge in certain areas on the last project, and honestly, it created some, you know, hardship for the residents. But again, it's, we don't know until we start. So, and we can work around that. When we start doing the services, we're going to go back to days, and we're hoping, you know, things go, there's less residents the further we work towards 3A. So we're optimistic that we get a majority of done before the good weather.
So if you hit ledge, there'll probably be blasting.
I don't think there'll be blast.
What would they, what would you?
So they're going to use a hydraulic hammer.
Okay.
And, I mean, if they were to be blasted, we would definitely damage our infrastructure. So blasting's definitely not allowed, you know, within our facilities. But if we do encounter ledge, they're going to be using, you know, jackhammers and, you know, hydraulic, you know, hammers.
But we won't be getting jackhammering at 3:00 in the morning?
No.
Okay.
Mary?
I would just mention, for the benefit of the audience, as the gentleman from National Grid have said, this is Phase Three. And before we embarked on this project, we looked at when the best time was to do this work, and the truth of the matter is, when you're replacing a gas main on Main Street in Hingham, there is no ideal time. And the collective decision was made that night work was the least disruptive to people. But that's not taking away from the fact that when it's outside your house at night, even if it's a couple days, it's a difficult couple days. From the town's perspective, National Grid's been a really responsive partner on Phases One and Two. A couple things that you did during Phases One and Two that I'd hope you'd continue. First of all, you've notified people that it's coming, but in Phases One and Two, people were given about a week's notice when the activity was going to be right outside your door. And what we heard from residents was that was helpful for planning. So if that could again be part of your process, that's helpful. The second thing that we heard from people was that if you are doing the night work, that if, you know, the materials are, the materials and equipment are staged somewhere when they're not in use. And when you were staging on Cushing Street, there was actually an arrangement where the material was transported to the site during the day because one thing that people told us around the staging areas was the sounds of the vehicles backing up and all the activity at night was difficult. So if we could count on your continued cooperation on those things, we're hearing from our residents that it makes it a little bit easier, and they appreciate it.
Absolutely. Yep, and we're also going to be giving the town periodic updates on the progress of the project. And finally, the restoration will be similar to Main Street where they did curb-to-curb.
Thank you. Any further questions? You know, I'd like to echo Mary's remarks in terms of the cooperation of National Grid. And Dennis, you know, you in particular, we've had some concerns from time to time, and you're very responsive and responsive to the residents. You know, it is a job, as you both point out, that we need to do, but I have appreciated your sensitivity in dealing with particular concerns as they've been raised through our office in particular. You know, you've also been a great partner with the town in terms of coordinating your work with our road building program, which we have very much appreciated over the long haul. It certainly, you know, maximizes taxpayer value for the road work that we do using your tax dollars. Mary brought up the staging. You know, I think that that was a very, very helpful accommodation that you made last time. I realize that that means some sort of advanced planning during the day, and I also know that, you know, it may not be airtight every time, but to the extent we can get the materials to the site during the day, you know, that again had been very helpful. Without ledge, I'm trying to anticipate the kind of pace of play here and how long you would envision being sort of in front of particular residences. So Mary, I know we talked about like a 72-hour, 48-hour, 72-hour kind of like, then I'm going to move a little ways away. Again, you know, that stretch of roadway, if Paul Healy were sitting here, he'd tell you, you're probably going to find some ledge there. But I'm just wondering how quickly you think you might advance.
I'm going to let Nelson go on record with this one.
Speak into the microphone.
Sure, I mean, without ledge, I mean, we're going to be out there doing verifications for approximately two weeks. And then all depending on each crew's capability, I think they can, you know, do at least a couple hundred feet a day, you know, without ledge, you know, safely. They're definitely one of our better contractors and very, extremely responsible, and they're, you know, a great group of guys. So, I mean, if your home is, say, 1,000 feet away, within five days, we're going to get to that point.
Great, thank you.
They also did the last phase of the project, MNX.
Oh, great. Okay.
It's going to be the same crew, same contractor.
Okay, great. Questions from the public with respect to National Grid's Stage Three, Phase Three work on gas main replacement? Okay, so we voted the road openings for this, so there's no vote associated. This is just a report out tonight, and we again appreciate it. It's a big project, it's disruptive, it's necessary, so the more, I think, socialization these kinds of efforts get, the better. Did you have something else?
So if residents have questions, is there a website they should go to, a phone number they should call? What's the best way to communicate any concerns?
Well, they can always reach out to me. I think my number's pretty well-known within the town. It's all, it was on the email notifications to town officials.
Yep.
The letters, the butter notification letters have a contact number on them.
Right, okay.
Yep.
And when all else fails, you can call us.
When all else fails.
Where's Heidi? You got that right. Okay, I see no further questions. I think we're all set. Really appreciate both of you coming in this evening. Thank you.
Yep, good luck.
Thanks for being here. Next up is the Hingham Triad Initiative, and Jennifer Young from the Senior Center. Good evening.
Hello.
You brought some of your friends with you tonight?
Just a couple. A lot of support.
Thank you. If you could just maybe tell us a little bit about the Triad Initiative and...
Sure, I would be happy to. So Triad is actually, is a national initiative that brings together public safety, seniors, and the community, community programs, to bring out educational topics to seniors that are relevant, specific to Hingham and what your interests are, that are focused around public safety. It was a program that we ran for over 10 years in Plymouth, and I just really feel like it's such an important program. I really wanted to bring it here to Hingham. I've been working with both chiefs, as well as the DA's office and the Sheriff's Department since last November, and the program is finally coming to fruition with a kickoff event scheduled on Monday, April 6 at 11 o'clock at the Senior Center. And the reason that we're here is because we actually signed an agreement that states that we are all in this program together, that we recognize its value, and we are committed to the delivery of the service. So just for an example, for anyone that's interested, some topics that we have run in the past, working with the YMCA, we brought a program called In Plain Sight into the Senior Center, which teaches older generations what to look for in a younger person's bedroom. So if you ever have your grandkids over for a weekend or, you know, for a holiday vacation, they teach you what to look for, for any signs that they might have some drug abuse issues. It was a really fantastic, hands-on program. We presented on triple E, Lyme disease, fire safety, falls prevention, just to name a few. So our goal is to meet monthly and bring this information out to the community, and what we're asking for is the support for the town on this. I just needed to know who was going to sign.
So Jennifer needed to know who would sign the agreement, and then she'll fill out the signature block?
Yep, so we're going to create a signature form. Actually, the district attorney's office handles that, and at the kickoff event, we will all together sign the agreement. So what we're looking for is determination on who, on behalf of the town, is going to be the signatory.
We can do that. I think we tend not to vote to approve an agreement that we haven't read. So we've got time though before this, right? Do we?
April 6 is the kickoff event, yeah.
I think it just wasn't included in the folders. I can probably print a draft.
Yeah, but they haven't had a chance to.
We haven't had a chance to review.
So at this stage, am I correct, you're looking to know whose name you should put on that agreement?
Correct.
And then we could, so I think we can say which official and not approve the agreement, but designate who will sign it once it's approved.
Right, and typically, typically it's the chair of the board that signs on behalf of the board.
Okay.
So I would think that we, that's what we would do.
Yes.
Okay. Great. I don't know that we need to vote that because we would ultimately vote to authorize the signatory.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sounds like a great program.
Yeah. Thank you for bringing it to me. Well, I just got a little free airtime on it, so, thank you.
So am I correct that it's addressing both physical crime as well as cybercrime? It's very broad?
It's very broad, and I think that's what is fantastic about the program, because we can actually present on any topic that's relevant to any of the individuals that want to participate. So we have presented on scams, and one of my favorite presentations is internet safety and online dating safety.
And is this something the Council on Aging would, what, you think that's funny? It's important to be safe out there, people. Is that something that you would review with the Council on Aging? How do you determine those priorities?
So we actually will develop a SALT council, which is seniors and law enforcement together.
Okay.
That will then select the Triad programs that we will deliver. And what we'll be looking for are volunteers, seniors in the community, to help participate and be a part of the SALT council.
Okay.
That's great.
Okay. Do you have any questions?
No, thank you, Jennifer.
Questions from the audience with respect to the Triad Initiative?
Thank you.
Okay, great. Great, thanks, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Don't go away. Okay. Okay, so let me just describe a little bit how the next sort of phase of the meeting's going, since I know that you weren't here for the National Grid presentation. So as you know, we have some very exciting news that we've all been working on for frankly several years. And to be able to come together tonight to begin to advance these initiatives at town meetings is actually one of the exciting parts of our roles. So to kind of give some context to that, the town administrator and assistant town administrator have been working with the chiefs to kind of conceptualize, again, the work that's been going on behind the scenes for several years with respect to the Senior Center, police and fire. So I'd ask Mr. Mayo to give us some background as to how we got here tonight, and then we will consider the individual warrant articles that will bring this forward to town meeting. Okay, all right, thanks.
Thank you. Michelle, are we all queued up? Okay, so we're naming this the Public Safety Complex and Senior Center Project. I just give a general table of content so people can follow along with what you can expect to hear from me as I go through this presentation. So the project concept, and I stress that this is concept in nature, this is a brand-new concept. We're looking to purchase a project, a piece of property that will facilitate this project, but this will in fact evolve over time as parts of the project mature. So the idea is to purchase a piece of property located at 335 Lincoln Street. Many of you may know it as Russo's Marine, right up on the shipyard side of 3A. That will be the site of the new joint police, police-fire-public-safety complex. So from there, with the police department moving to that facility, we open up the space here in this complex for expansion of the Senior Center. So that's the initial plan, that's the general concept. We'll get into some of the details here as I roll through. So estimated project cost, this is based off of some prior projects that have been done around the region, around the state and in the region in the past couple of years. But the public safety complex concept would be to bring that to annual town meeting here in April and ask for feasibility and conceptual design funds in time to do the work here subsequent from April through the fall. And then at a special town meeting in the fall, we would ask for full design bid documents, money for full design bid documents, and ultimately construction funds at a special town meeting in the fall. Again, initial concept. The Senior Center buildout is anticipated to go to annual town meeting in April 2020 as well. We would ask for those design funds at the same meeting. So this is here coming up at this town meeting. Those design funds would be obtained at town meeting, and then perhaps we would bring the Senior Center project to a town meeting in 2020 for construction funds. Again, evolutionary process, we'll see where the designs lead us and what the finance team and the lawyers all explain to us is the best process moving forward as we go through it. But for now, that's the plan. So we're looking at $250,000 for the public safety complex. This is conceptual design, several conceptual designs as well as a feasibility study. So this would not be the final bid documents for this project. Project's a little bit too big, the window would be too tight to do that, so we're going to do feasibility study and then some conceptual designs to feed the public process. And then the Senior Center project would, we would have the ability to build out the entire bid document set. So that would be a $475,000 number this April. Construction, on the flip side, is we're anticipating in the neighborhood of $28 million for the public safety complex. Again, that's the joint police department headquarters and the North Fire Station, together on one facility, in one facility at 335 Lincoln Street. And then the Senior Center buildout from its existing space to the entirety of what it will evolve into or grow into, approximately $8 million. Now, I'm going to read the asterisk because it's important. These are estimates only. Design work has not yet been completed. The public safety facility includes estimates, estimate includes the property purchase number, which I'll get to in a minute, and as well as the operational expansion costs. And then the Senior Center estimate does include the operational expansion costs as well. Okay, so the schedule. I'm going to, you know, I just explained this concept of feasibility study and conceptual designs for the public safety as well as the full bid documents in the Senior Center, that's what those paragraphs state. And the schedule down below, I think is, again, this is our early estimate. Please don't hold me to these dates. This is what I think we can do as of right now. We'll work our way through it when we get architects on board and they start to build out the design plans, and then we'll see what's feasible. But as of right now, we go to April town meeting here in a month and a half and get feasibility and conceptual design costs for the public safety facility, as well as design costs or design funds for the Senior Center. Then we go from there. Right now, I would hope that we would be able to get full design and construction money in the fall of 2020 for both projects. We would begin construction on the fire, police, public safety complex in the spring of '21. Figure about 18 months from there, the police and fire departments would be moving into that new facility, and we would then build, begin construction in the Senior Center. Police department has to be out before we start that work, so it's a staged process. And then as they're gone, we move into that space about a year later, was the estimate. Okay, so where is the property I'm talking about? I just explained it, it's 335 Lincoln Russo's Marine on the shipyard side of Route 3A, on the north side of Route 3A, as you're heading into Weymouth on your right. The property consists of about 3.1 acres, and it is in close proximity to the T commuter boat road, commuter boat, and more importantly, to the large building complexes we just put up on Route 3A. So Alliance and Broadstone Bear Cove on the end of Beale Street, plus the Avalon Development over on the other side of 3A. So there's a lot of population up there that's driving the chief's call volume up towards that end of town. So that's the reason why that's such a vital facility. So purchasing the property is the linchpin to the entirety of the plan. We had a property valuation done, we did an appraisal as per Mass General Law requires, and we have an as-is appraisal of, excuse me, an as-if vacant appraisal of $4 million with an as-is of 3.7 million after there's a World War II-era concrete pad that takes up the, you know, probably half or so of the 3.1 acres that we'll have, you know, chip up and remove. So there's a little bit of money reduced for that. The purchase price, however, has been established with the market rate of $5.475 million. That is written into a letter of intent that's before the Board of Selectmen tonight, that I think is their next item on their agenda to ratify that letter that I signed last Thursday with the owner. So that's not official until the Board of Selectmen ratifies that. If they were to do that, that would be done tonight. Okay, moving on from that. A little bit of background, police, we'll talk a little bit about the Police Operations Center, then the Fire Operations, and then the Senior Center. So the Police Operations serves approximately 24,000 residents now as our town grows, not to mention all of the businesses in town, and patrols over 140 miles of road, just to give you a sense of the scope and size of their responsibilities. There are 11 administrative officers, as well as civilian staff, 48 non-administrative officers, and 22... officers, and 22 special police officers that fulfill their responsibilities from the police force. So if we jump to the fire department, again, the same 24,000 residents are served and businesses, and that's over 26 square miles. Obviously, same number of roads, et cetera. They get about 4,000 calls a year for fire and medical calls. We have five administrative officers, as well as civilian staff, and about 52 non-administrative So this is just a brief summary of the history of the police and fire stations. And again, I'll get to the senior center as the second half of the presentation. Back in 1941, the current North Fire Station, otherwise known as Torrent, was built, and a lot of it's, a lot of that current facility is original to that date, as the chief has over and over again reminded me. So I thought I was being clever by highlighting the blue and red dates so people could understand what I was talking about. But so 1967, the current space was, the current space where the police department is now was added to the school facility that was this building at the time. So that's when that space got added on, and so that's 1967 era. Actually, an interesting fact, in '67, a land acquisition committee was formed to investigate a joint police-fire station. So that was an interesting fact that, again, Chief Murphy drudged up. So back in '98, the police department moved from its original headquarters up on Lincoln Street at the end of, just before the merge, onto 3A. And that, they moved into their current facility again in 1998. In 2001, some minor renovations had been done in the North Fire Station at the Torrent Station. That was to the kitchen and bathrooms. In 2011, Shrek, the regional call center, moved into this facility, and in order for that to work out, we had to take 1,500 square feet out of that, out of the existing police space that was already crammed, and give it to Shrek. So they went with 1,500 less square feet at that time. In 2012, the Town Hall Study Committee was formed and began their analysis of space needs across Town Hall, which included the police department, as well as the senior center, as we know. I'll get to that in a minute. Back in 2015, the final feasibility study suggested that the North Station was insufficient and could not function as a modern fire department. At town meeting that same year, $500,000 were appropriated for design costs to renovate that station. As the Town Hall Study Committee began at the same, around the same time, researching other new police departments regionally, including other joint police-fire stations. So that was all happening at the same time. Again, during that year, the fire station building committee had identified that the North Station is not a viable long-term solution because of some space constraints, as well as seismic concerns. I guess there's an underground, chief's going to tell me if I'm saying this wrong, but an underground river of sorts runs down through there, and the building needs to be supported properly on bedrock, and there are some issues with that. So it's just not operationally possible to maintain a fire department at that location. And that's what the fire station building committee ran into when they were doing their work after their mandate from town meeting to do that, to work towards that project. So the following year, somewhere around '17, they started investigating 19 Fort Hill Street, which is the school depot, where the buses go and everybody fuels up down in there. The problem with there is that there are some school department facilities in there that would have to be relocated, perhaps new facilities built, et cetera. So we're not seeing any benefits. We're putting one person, one department there to build them a new one, and it just kind of snowballs. So that slowed that down. There are other concerns there, operational concerns. There's a rail route line right there. If the train is going by, the ambulance, as you can imagine, doesn't really want to sit waiting for a train to go by while they're trying to get to a call. So things like that occurred, traffic patterns, et cetera. In 2018, the call volume and response times had been reviewed in large part with the assistance of the two chiefs and Selectman Johnson. We started looking at the projected call volume and...
Current call volume and population.
Population trends. Thank you. That's right. Population trends out into the, in North Hingham, and that was dragging the need for the fire station from its current location further north, where the population now was. So then we started researching potential properties, again, with Selectman Johnson's leadership, trying to find properties along Route 3A. That process continued forever, and so it seemed. And then in 2020...
It's no knock on me, though, right?
Right. In 2020, we identified this property, 335 Lincoln, as an ideal operational location. It really is optimum for the fire department. Now, if you remember, the two services, fire departments need to be in the headquarters, the station needs to be centralized, centrally located to its response zone, whereas the police department, it's helpful, but the police department is already dispersed. They're already deployed into the streets. Their police officers are already in their cruises, in their sectors. So when they get a call, they're already out there. It's the fire department that's leaving from the station. So you want the North Fire Station to be central to the call volumes in the north part of town. So that's why this is really optimum. And then in January, just recently, we began negotiations to purchase that property, and this past Thursday, we were culminated in a signed letter of intent. I wish that had happened two months earlier, but here we are. So, senior center. Located 224 Central Street, this is the, obviously adjacent to this facility, it's part of the Town Hall complex. There's approximately, it makes up, the current senior center makes up approximately 5,000 square feet. Senior Center operations. They function according to a Master General Law. They serve seniors 60 and over. There's approximately 7,300 seniors, identified seniors 60 or over as part of our demographic in Hingham. That's about 31.4% of the population. The operations in the senior center that Jennifer helps to manage are several and varied transportation services, fitness classes, and the like. Social, cultural programs, a lot of educational programs. I think most of the folks in this room, I hope, are familiar with those. She and the staff do a wonderful job of providing those services. And you can see the senior center staff is lean and mean, and they rely heavily on that bottom number there, 161 volunteers. So it's a functional system that needs to function better, and that's what we're trying to, that's what we're trying to do.
They're lean. They're not mean.
You haven't had to... She's very nice. Okay, senior center history. 1998, we moved the Town Hall complex from a smaller location, believe it or not, over on Hershey Street, to its current, to its current site. The Town Hall Study Committee was formed and began its review in 2012. The elder services department is accredited by the National Institute of Senior Centers in 2015 with the help of Barbara Farnsworth. Many of you knew Barbara or know Barbara. This process identified that there are core deficiencies in the existing space that don't allow for a senior center to function in a modern, in a modern environment. So in 2020, we identified this new potential space, if the police department were to vacate, over to that public safety space. Like I said earlier, the idea would be to grow the senior center into their, the existing police department space. Project benefits. Bear with me, there's many, and I feel the need to say them out loud. I think it's important for everyone to hear. We want to modernize our police and fire services into one complex. I like the, and I think the chiefs do as well, I've heard from both of them, to this extent, that I think that it would build a lot of operational unity and cooperation between these two important public safety departments. So I like that, I like that visual, and I like that reality. Operationally, like I spoke, like I mentioned earlier, this is an optimal location for the fire, for the North Fire Station. It does provide a much-needed, modern and expanded space for the North Fire Station. Selectman Fisher got the pleasure of a tour of that station earlier today, and I got a feeling you would agree.
I will agree.
Yes, much-needed operational space, as well as for the, from the police station. And I know you toured that as well. So the senior center would expand into police department space at Town Hall, at least tripling the existing space. So that's a, that's a nice take. And I say "at least" because, again, this is an evolutionary process. There might very well be opportunity for more. We need to work with the architect and figure out the final design. And by the way, I think the intent, and we'll get into some of the articles in a little bit, but the intent is to make sure that Jennifer is a, is a key member, plays a key role in working with the building committee that would be designated in one of the articles that were, that are being discussed tonight. So we would also provide long-term ability for the town to serve its growing senior population. 31.4% now, it's going to be getting higher. That number goes up, not down. We're freeing up over, this is, I think people might enjoy this, freeing up over 40 parking spaces. I'm being, I'm here at Town Hall. In reality, that's probably a low number. That's just the police department fleet and their personal vehicles. So you start looking at the foot traffic and people coming in and out of their facility for their purposes that are not the current police officers. I think you're going to see more than 40 spaces freed up. School administration could expand into some of the space that the police department might vacate. On the upper level especially, that's a possibility. So there could be some, there could be some room there. The Town Hall lunch facility on our second floor, Jennifer and I had talked about an idea about maybe incorporating into the new design a proper kitchen lunch facility down in the senior center that could also serve, instead of the Town Hall lunch facility serving, serving some of the senior population, I think it would be maybe the reverse. We would put that lunch facility down in the senior center that might serve some of the Town Hall staff. So again, I like the synergies. I like the cross-pollination, and that's a real possibility, and that also frees space up up here for additional meeting space or office space as needed. The favorable borrowing environment, you know, Mr. Patch was here earlier talking about that for the water company. That's true across the board for all of our projects. This is an all-time, all-time, you know, good opportunity for, interest rates are at an all-time low. So it's an opportunity for us really to be, to be thinking about these projects seriously right now. And we're looking at upgrading our aging municipal infrastructure. That's what the rating agencies want to see, because if you don't do that periodically, you end up with unnecessary emergency expenditures that, that's what really they frown upon. So to keep our triple-A rating, we like to do these projects when appropriate. So, you know, just aside from all of that not happening, some of the other risks that we might identify is just simply delaying all of these, this, solving all these space needs in the fire and police department, as well as the senior center, school administration, some of the other departments. We'd be delaying the Town Hall parking project if we didn't move forward. You know, we would lose the opportunity to purchase an appropriately-sized and located space or land that doesn't come up very often. We've been looking for a couple of years, and this space is available now. It's an opportunity we shouldn't turn our back on, in my opinion. Escalating construction costs keep going up. We saw that with the bathhouse. We saw that with some other projects in town. Let's do this while, you know, the sooner that we do it, the better. And interest rates, I just, I just spoke about that. So I'm going to speak about it again, just to drill this point home a little bit. The interest rate environment is second to none. It's as favorable as it's ever been. If we're looking at a $36 million is what I outlined earlier, so you're looking at, on the second bullet point, which is projects that would be financed in 2020, we're projecting a 2% interest rate, hopefully better. We would see somewhere between, somewhere around $300 on the average tax bill would be the increase for these two projects. So as opposed to under the 3.5% interest rate that we project going out, because you don't know where that's going to land, you're in the, you know, $400 range. So it's a significant savings to each, each and every taxpayer. And the last slide is just a summary of the articles that are before the board tonight. We're going to seek to fund, seek funds for feasibility study and conceptual designs for a new public safety facility at 335 Lincoln Street, as well as to establish a public safety facility building committee to oversee the feasibility study, conceptual design, final design engineering, and construction of a new public safety facility at 335 Lincoln Street. And then Article QQ will be to seek funds for design and engineering services for renovations to the senior center and Town Hall, followed by the establishment of a senior center building committee to oversee the design, engineering, and renovation of the senior center located at Town Hall. The other point I would make, I mentioned earlier about Jennifer's involvement in the senior center building committee, I think the intent would be to have the chiefs support the building committee on the public safety facility, and I've spoken with both of them and their team, and they're both excited about that opportunity, so.
Thank you.
It's a lot of words.
Very, very well done. Thank you, Tom and Michelle. So let me just explain how the discussion will move forward so that you're able to access it when it's your opportunity. You know, typically, we try to take things when they come up on the agenda, but as you can tell from Tom's presentation, this is all kind of intermingled. So my suggestion to us is that we have a general conversation about the topics covered in Tom's presentation. The way the votes will work is the first thing that the board will need to consider is whether we go forward and try to buy this land. If we're not going to do that, we're not going to do any of this. So that will be the first discussion. If that's a favorable vote by this board, we'll move through and consider each of the individual warrant articles. What I would suggest that we do, again, is have a general discussion. Typically, we'll ask questions. I'd invite the chiefs and Ms. Young to comment, and then open it up to some questions or comments from the audience at that point, and then we'll return to the formal agenda items. So having said that, Joe.
Tom, Michelle, thank you. This is really an outstanding presentation. There was a little bit of a contradiction, because I think you heard our chairwoman saying, this has been in the works for a while, and then we had Tom saying, well, this is brand-new, it's all in flux. And it's both, because this concept has been discussed, has been analyzed and reviewed for a number of, I was about to say months, but it's really a number of years. And it's really selecting the right opportunity and bringing it to fruition, and Tom has been able to do that. And so it's new that it's now, this is the project that has come to fruition. So when you've asked Tom, when you've asked members of the board about, why can't we do this? Why can't we address parking specifically or do a specific expansion with respect to the senior center? We have all known that this was coming, and we didn't want to preempt that opportunity by saying we're going to commit to a narrow project rather than looking at the entire necessity of what needs to be addressed. So we appreciate your patience in allowing us to come up with what we think is an appropriate and grand solution to a number of issues. With respect to the move of the police department, I just had a question in terms of the interaction with Shrek and the police. Right now, it's the same building. That will be severed when they move. Will that have any impact on the operations?
No, the, so right now, Shrek supports four regional...
May I want to explain what Shrek is?
So Shrek is the South Shore Regional Emergency Communications Center.
It's not a green monster. Okay.
The, you haven't had to negotiate with the union.
How?
The, Shrek is a, it's the 911 center. It's the call center. When you call 911, that's who answers. They serve four communities, Norwell, Hull, Cohasset, and Hingham, and they happen to be located here in our building. At the time when it was, when it was new, we had the facility and space available. So them not being adjacent to our police force would simply make them, make it equal to all the other police and fire departments in the four-town region.
Yep. So with respect to the North Fire Station, I think there are real limitations on what can be done, in part because the fire equipment today is simply physically larger, and it's difficult to get it through the bay doors now. And we've got height limitations, and it would be really major to try to do, to change to accommodate the safety equipment that we need. So I think this move is critical if we're going to advance the fire department.
Joe, do you mind if I just jump in right there? Because you reminded me of something I didn't stress earlier. That North Fire Station is also being 1941, a 1941-era building was not designed for female firefighters. And that's a problem in our, in our modern force, is the bedrooms and bathroom facilities were not designed to accommodate female firefighters. So we have problems with that now. We need to address that. That's extremely important.
Right. I mean, so it is being addressed now, almost on an ad hoc basis, rather than in the way that it should be, it should be addressed. And with respect to the police, the facility there really needs to be enhanced. As you mentioned, I toured it again today, and there are a number of issues that will be addressed, I think, moving it to a different location. And we will need to wait until the police are out before addressing the senior centers, although there are holding cells... although there are holding cells that are available for seniors, if you need them.
Jennifer can decide whether she wants to keep those or not.
In terms of timing, if all goes well, when could we expect the seniors, the senior center to move into an expanded facility?
So right now, I'm projecting that to be in the fall of twenty-three.
Michelle's going back to the schedule.
Slide five.
Slide five. Okay. So in, in terms of setting expectations, it's a process moving forward. I know folks want to have things addressed today. Yesterday, that's right. But it, we do need to take it in steps. And I think since it will take several years, we do not want to lose sight of the need to address parking in the short term. So that is something that we're going to continue to look at.
Yep. Agreed.
That's all I have right now.
Okay. Thank you. Mary?
First, I want to start, Tom and Michelle, this is excellent work, and over the last several weeks, as this has been coming into fruition, in addition to settling a hundred eighteen million dollar budget and all these warrant articles, Tom and Michelle, and integrating a water system, Tom and Michelle have been working tirelessly on negotiations, doing all kinds of work that's involved in this, and so it's just, you know, thank, thank you to both of you. A couple comments and a couple questions. The, the first question I have, and it relates to this timeframe, and Tom, you and I, we chatted about this over the weekend, we chatted about it today, and I do think that we want to just make sure that if we appropriate money this fall for a senior center, and we're not beginning construction for two years, that those quotes and those estimates, you know, have an appropriate shelf life, and that, that we take into account the price escalation. So I think we need to talk a little bit with bond counsel, we need to talk to our town council, but I, you know, regardless of how that shakes out, this project to us is addressing the, addressing space needs across the town. So I think we're going to need a little guidance from our experts about how to step through that. What I don't want to do is ask for money this fall, and then two years later, say, gosh, we're going to need some more money to do this. I, I would, I would hate for, you know, I would hate for that to sort of trip us up. I would also just, I'd mention a couple things. First of all, as Tom's been looking at the economics, this in no way contemplates what we would do with the existing North Fire Station.
That's right.
So, you know, we have other facility needs in the town. Certainly, we talk about potentially selling town assets that are no longer used to defray the cost. So, you know, that, that particular building could help solve some of our other space concerns, or potentially help, help defray the cost.
Somebody mentioned maybe an Italian restaurant?
You know?
I don't know where I heard that one.
By your house, Julie. I would also just say that, you know, and, and many of you, and thank you for being here tonight, many of you, and, and we've gotten a lot of letters over the weekend, and we, you know, appreciate that. I, I think as we've been looking at all these facility issues, one thing that I've heard really for, you know, even while I was on the advisory committee, was in general, a desire for a senior center to be located within a building to build a sense of community. I think by and large, what I've heard from people is, if I had, if we had a choice, we'd rather not be in kind of a standalone facility, because there's less of an opportunity for engagement. And the three of us heard that most recently in the fall, when we attended a meeting down at the senior center, and, and I like that possibility. As we go into design, I'm not sure forty spaces will be sufficient. I think we probably need a lot more, so.
That's a good point.
As, as we're looking at this, I, I wouldn't, I think we need to define how much parking should we have, as opposed to how much parking is, is freed up. With respect to the location of a public safety facility or a fire station, as we've been looking at sites over the years, you know, one consideration is neighbors and abutters. You know, for example, locating a fire station on Beale Street, you know, if, if you live on Beale Street, that maybe kind of doesn't feel so good. If I think about Route three A and, and that strip in particular, I think that that is less intrusive on residents, in terms of a location for a fire station, which, which is appealing. So two other things. One thing that I would just add to sort of the history, because I think it, it's compelling for me about this particular project. Several years ago, you may recall that the Hingham Mutual site was up for sale. That was right next to Bear Cove Park. So, so not sure if people know this, but at the time, the town actually bid on that property, because we thought that that would make an ideal site to put a senior center, maybe put H-CAM in there, put some other things. And the town had the parcel appraised. I'm going off memory, so maybe off a little. We had the property appraised, I think it appraised at, at somewhere around five million dollars, and the town made, the town made an offer in that neighborhood. We never got a response to that bid for two and a half years. We bid it, we'd say, do you want to talk? We'd get no response. That parcel sold to the people who now own Broadstone Bear Cove, that big development that's going up, for over eleven million dollars. So, you know, as, as, as I'm looking at this as our, you know, we have a fiduciary responsibility that we don't want to overpay for something, right? We don't want to overpay. But I, I look at that appraisal, and I'm remembering back with Broadstone Bear Cove, and thinking that property along that stretch is going to go at a premium. And if I look at the interest rates that, that Tom put up, if, if you look at the difference between the appraised value of the property and the purchase price of the town, and again, you fold it into a thirty million dollar project, it looks to me like what we save in debt service makes up that difference in about two or three years. So, you know, again, I'm, I'm looking at these interest rates, and our financial advisors on Friday night told us that, you know, right now, the rates for twenty years for municipalities are at about one and a half percent. They suggested we use two percent for this analysis. If we wait a few years, would we get a parcel? How much might it cost? What are, what are the interest rates? And those, those three things, you know, all kind of in, in my mind are compelling. I'd, I'd say one other thing, you know, as, as we've been looking at all this, you know, there's a lot of different possibilities. I mean, you folks have been with us as we've looked, you know, could you, could you move this here, could you move that there? We also realize that in some ways, we also have to be a little bit opportunistic. And we can't control when real estate comes on the market. We can't, you know, some of the sites, there are very few parcels along that three-A corridor that could house both police and fire. And that, to me, says that this is an opportunity that we need to realize may not come around. Tom, could you also comment if the town, just on the specifics of the offer, and, and the, you know, with, this, this needs a town meeting vote, so can you just kind of mention how the, the letter is structured?
Sure.
With the, with the owner?
Sure. So the, the purchase price is set at five million, four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And the, we, we have this, the, the P and S would expire on November twentieth of 2020. And the idea there is, we would get through this, this process and get design funds here in April. We would design, create the feasibility study and the preliminary design concepts, and then go to a fall town meeting, probably around, you know, earlier than Thanksgiving, and, and get either approval or not, and know what we're going to do from there. If we get approval, then we have the, the capacity to, to follow through with, with the P and S.
And so then said another way, if, if a fall town meeting was unsuccessful for some reason, there's a contingency and the town would not be obligated.
That's right.
To purchase, to purchase the land.
Yes, there is no, there is no obligation.
Thank you.
Okay. You've both covered much of what I think I, I was going to cover. I guess I would say that you saw in the late nineties that there was a consolidation of services here at Central Junior High School for a couple of different reasons. One, the town was opportunistic at that point, taking advantage of a school building that was otherwise going to close. And two, that was kind of the way of the world. That was sort of best practice, to create a campus approach through the offering of municipal services. So to collect everybody under one roof and produce some of the operational synergies that Tom was mentioning. I think that you'll see in other towns now, the best practice, particularly with respect to police and fire, is to house those components of municipal services in separate standalone buildings, and oftentimes together. So, you know, I think that as, as equipment evolves, as numbers of personnel evolve, as the inclusion of, of women on both the police and fire service evolve, it, it means expanded facilities. You know, if you've seen some of the size of the fire equipment these days, you know, it's pretty extraordinary. So I think that we are, are kind of following the marketplace in this, and that is best practice in municipal service delivery, particularly for public safety, points in this direction. And to Mary's point, this particular parcel allows us to keep up with that, with that pace and that evolution of the provision of services. You know, the timing, because if I, if I'm you, and I'm sitting here, and I'm excited about the ability to expand the senior center, but it's going to take till 2023, I, I think that part of it for us is, we have continued, even though we knew this was going on, we have all continued to try to think through what the other alternatives are, what that timing might look like. And so, you know, when we coalesced around this concept, in part, it was because we had, or hoped to have some certainty around, here's what we're going to do, and we can plan for that. You know, if we, if we reject this proposal, we're kind of back out trying to find a parcel, do we have a standalone senior center, whether we move out of Town Hall? This kind of gives us, you know, it, it sort of lines up certain of the variables, so that we can then proceed forward in a meaningful way, and proceed forward in a way that we can share with town meeting, here's the plan, and here's why it's the plan. I do feel like it's, it's worth another minute to comment on the premium that we would pay on the purchase price here. Because, you know, you've, you've watched our budget hearings, we don't like to spend money. And, and we have, I think, carefully considered why we think this premium makes sense at this point in time for this particular parcel. You know, that, the location on, on the Route three A corridor exactly lines up with our GIS call data mapping for the fire station. It allows us to move fire services out of the neighborhood on North Street where, and that is a goal of the town. It is, you know, it is a parcel that has, that is available. You know, I, and my colleagues, and my colleagues before me, have thought of all different strategies kind of along that corridor, and with respect to other parcels, that as Tom noted, produce their own complexities, and frankly, their own costs. So, you know, I don't undertake this, or wouldn't undertake this consideration lightly. You know, frankly, the private property owner who holds this property actually wanted far more for this. And, you know, I think we, we did feel there was a limit to our ability to justify a premium payment. But I think for me, the ability to move forward, we, we are a little stuck, right? And the ability, again, to have a plan and to be able to move forward within this realm, you know, I, I think is, is part of our stewardship of moving the town forward, particularly in these three crucial areas, so. And before I, well, two, two things. We can also get access to the light on, the lights on three A, so we will be able to pull emergency vehicles out of that location, which is also important. And then Mary mentioned, I just want to mention before I forget, to make sure that we post this presentation on the website, so that folks that aren't with us tonight, or folks that are with us tonight and don't, you know, don't have access to the pieces of paper, can access it on the website.
Will do.
The next thing I'd like to do is just invite the chiefs, if they'd like to join us at the table and have any comments with respect to the presentation. Seats are at a premium, just like the parking. Good evening.
Good evening.
You know, so we have all had the opportunity over the last several years to be with you, both at the North Fire Station and here in Town Hall. We understand that you have been marshaling on in less-than-desirable facilities, you know, much like we talked about with Foster School a few weeks ago. There comes a point in time when the facility actually begins, begins to impede your ability to deliver the kinds of services that you want to deliver. And I would suggest that we're coming to that point, or have, has surpassed that point with respect to both of these facilities.
Yeah, I'm a little bit newer than the fire station, but I, I think when we moved here in nineteen ninety-eight, I don't think we really expected to be here for another twenty-two years. It was just sort of, it met the needs at the time. We're far, we're just continuing to outgrow the needs. You know, we, we talk about, we, we can't do other things with other departments, because we don't have the interior room, we don't have the storage room, our locker rooms are overflowing, and we just continue, we, we really need to modernize to something new, and to get the facilities. And not only that, but training in police departments is really, we need to have training facilities in a modern police department. We don't have training facilities. We can't even hold meetings here, because the chiefs from other towns complain they can't get a parking spot.
You're not alone.
So we, we have gone to meeting over at the fire department, where we have to walk from the field somewhere out there.
You're ticketing them too, don't you?
But no, we, I know that Tom and Deputy Chief Jones were working all weekend long. I had the opportunity behind Plymouth, playing, supervising some young children, so that was an enjoyment for me. But we were doing a tour today, and Joe asked me if, when we went down to the, the site and walked over with, with the chief and some of our other personnel, and he asked me, will this really work for you? And I told him that in nineteen eighty, I started out on Lincoln Street at one eighty-four at the old police station. I said, I didn't think forty years later, I'd be coming back home. So yes, this can work for us. It always has worked for us back for those, for that amount of time. And I think for us, it, it's a facility that, that will work. We, we've basically designed our cruisers now, so that a lot, a lot of the stuff can be done in the cruisers. They have all the links with computers and everything else. And it's just a little bit further drive than here, and I, I sort of like the location, because one of the, it was always difficult to give directions to this place, because you're off the main road. It's much easier for a police station to be located on a main road with a lot of traffic, because everyone sees it, knows it's there. So with that, I'll let you take over.
So.
Here you go. Here's the mic.
Thanks, chief. So there's, there's many comments that I have about this, about first, working with the police department on this. You guys alluded to it, that there are many police departments that have shared facilities. Some of them are the police headquarters and a satellite fire station, which is what the intent of this would be. This would not move the fire administration from over at three thirty-nine Main Street. We still have our facilities there, the mechanics facilities, admin offices, training facilities, all that stuff. That would stay over there. What this would allow, though, is the facility for the police department, including the training room, which our guys would have access to. But more importantly, for us, it's really a satellite station, and we need enough storage space and space that fits the modern equipment, you know? Two thirty North Street, Station Two, was a great location. It was, you know, built back in nineteen forty-one. It served the town well. Unfortunately, it just doesn't work, and that's what, I'm looking at Nancy, who was on the fire station building committee, you know, there was a number of different steps to get to that point, where it finally, you know, the town and the selectmen at the time made the decision and said, okay, we need to move in another direction. And it's taken a few years to get there, but I'm excited about this, that, you know, it looks like there's an opportunity here. Some of the services that we both provide could be shared, you know? So there might be some facilities within the building. Like a lot of times, you'll see places like locker room, or not locker rooms, weight rooms. Joe's, ours down at Station Two, which is literally in the entranceways, you're going in, and he commented that his weight room in his house is bigger than the one at the station, you know, with modern equipment. So facilities like that could be shared. It also could be used for other things within town, that, you know, right now, the town's emergency operations center is over at Central Fire Station. We don't really have a good backup. It's supposed to be here at Town Hall, but it's not really designed for that, so his training room could probably serve that purpose as well. So there's a lot of opportunities for it. I, I'm excited about it. I think it can work really well.
I just think it's exciting to think about designing a facility, as Mary was sort of alluding to. of alluding to the parking, like, what is it you want and need? What's your vision for a modern police and fire operation out of that facility? And then, you know, we can, we can design a building that actually meets your needs instead of having a building that you've got to fit yourselves into.
And, and that's, for the fire, that's what we were doing when we were settling on 230 North Street, Station 2. That, you know, one of the fire department's needs is we recognize that currently that station has two bays in it, you know, meaning that the engine and the ambulance can park side by side and both respond at the same time. And then we have to stack the other equipment behind it. One of the early things that that committee recognized is that as the town changes, especially as we're getting more and more development on the Route 3A corridor, then we have to build a facility, not for what we're currently doing, but what we may be doing in the future. And one of the requirements that we said right from the start is that we would need a three-bay station. And that was not possible, no matter how they tried to do it at, you know, the current location. And that's before we got into all of the other size limitations at that station, just specifically, you know, storage, the amount of bedrooms, the, you know, a common area. All of those things were very, very limited down there. It was borderline if it was going to be able to work. But to be honest with you, I think a lot of the members on that committee almost felt that when we ran up against the, the seismic issues and some of the other issues, that that was probably the right decision to say, you know what, let's move away from this. Because it was, it was going to work, but it wasn't going to be great. Whereas going to a new facility allows us to start from the scratch and, you know, really design it and get everything that we need out of it for our modern needs and for the future.
Jennifer, I don't know whether you want to make any comments at this juncture about, about the ability to then move into bigger space here, or whether, you know, we'll just go.
I would mention that she came over for a tour with a tool belt and a ruler today. [laughing] I'm not sure what that meant.
She's already got post-it notes that she's putting on things.
Jennifer, come on up, please.
You can take that, I'll grab it.
Thank you.
Do you want us to up there too, or are you good with this?
I'm going to ask you to come back.
Yeah, okay.
It's like the dream team.
Yeah. The older dream team for me.
He's on fire.
I think I, I would echo a lot of what both of you guys have said, that, you know, we're, we're in a space right now that no longer fits the needs, the interests of the population that we're trying to service. And, you know, looking around the room here, I think that there's a lot more experience in the room than even I have, you know, in my 10 years in, in the position. But, you know, having had been here for one year, it, it didn't take me very long to realize that you guys need so much more, you deserve so much more. You know, we have three program rooms, and what we want to offer doesn't fit into the spaces that we have. It doesn't fit the furniture that we have to fit into the spaces that we have. And the staff and the volunteers have been doing such an amazing job, carrying a very heavy load for a long time. And I think for the enthusiasm in the room, you can see this is exactly what they were hoping to hear tonight. It's, it's not just about the, the physical space that we have. You know, the walls, we have competing programs. You know, I can only run one program if the Opals are singing, or if ukulele's playing, I have to put them over here in Town Hall, and, which impacts the, the departments over here as well. So we're trying to be considerate of that. You know, we need to be able to offer more support groups. You know, and I had mentioned, you know, sort of some more innovative programming. There was some laughs around the internet, you know, dating safety. But the reality is, you know, we have a lot of seniors that are living longer. You know, a lot of single seniors that need the opportunity to connect and socialize and find programs to age better. And we're not just talking about people, you know, 80, 90, 100 years old. The younger we can bring people in, the healthier they're going to age. And it's our responsibility to give the opportunity to do that. And that impacts the town as a whole. You know, we don't provide just services to seniors. We provide services to caregivers and loved ones. And, you know, one of the biggest detriments that we have right now is that if we have somebody that's bringing a loved one in that needs assistance with using a restroom, we don't have a restroom that they can use together. So we're, we're going to look at some really short-term solutions to, to things like that. But really, the safety and accessibility of what we have no longer meets the needs that we're, we're trying to service. So I'm very excited.
Well said. Joe or Mary, questions for the chief or Jennifer at this point?
Actually, I have a question for Tom. We currently have in the budget, might correct, some money for short-term fixes at the senior center.
We do.
And so this does not impact that.
No.
So we are going to be continuing with that as well.
Yes.
And then for the two chiefs, I know there's perhaps in other communities, a history of bitter rivalry between the police and the fire. Can you folks handle being in the same building together?
You have to remember, I had to live with a fire chief for a while. We, we worked that out many, many years ago. He was the older one. And, no. I'll just be honest with you, in my 40 years being on this department, everywhere I used to go, I would talk about our fire department, and the other police departments would look at me like I had four heads. And I, we've always got along well with our department. Our offices are over visiting. Maybe it's the chili that someone mentioned here earlier, but we've always had that connection. And I think we're unique in that way. And then I think as a town, that's something that we as a town work very well with all department heads. So I think it's just how this town is arranged. It's, we have no problem. I actually look forward to being in the same building.
On a more serious note, for Chief Murphy, could you speak about how, how it's going to, how you would anticipate it working with the trucks leaving that location, heading up to 3A, going either direction, the lights and the access?
So without, obviously, without having architectural designs or anything else, some of my staff have gone up and looked at it. And there are multiple options for what we can see. I don't see the trucks exiting right onto 3A at all. But again, that would be an architect's decision to do that. More likely, they would either enter onto Shipyard Drive closer towards the Avalon Building, or they would enter onto the, what is it?
Essington.
Essington, which runs behind it. Right now, on our Station 3, Constitution up near South Elementary School, that is a state road, and we have the ability to take over that light right there. So it's very common in front of most fire stations to have the ability, even on a state road or whatever, to preset the lights and then allow us to pull up from that.
So what you were saying is, is so when they pulled out of the fire station, they wouldn't go directly onto 3, not a new curb cut, but they would actually wind around?
Probably. That's the way I would envision it. Because if they pull directly out onto 3A, then that's the one lane there, you know. So that doesn't work, that they'd have to go up and turn around. Whereas if they pulled out on Essington, then to Shipyard, or directly onto Shipyard, then that road right there allow, it's actually kind of a three-way intersection. It goes straight across to Talbot's. It can take a right onto 3A, or take a left onto 3A as well. And to be honest with you, I can see that there would be times that we would be going to the right, specifically if we're going to the facility on Sergeant William B. Terry, if we're going to Hockley Drive or anything like that. But there may be other times that we may go down Sergeant William B. Terry to cut over, to go towards the conservation area, or Conservatory Park or anything like that. So we would vary the route depending upon where the response was. But that option allows that because we could pull out onto Shipyard Drive.
And there's another player in that area, which is the MBTA. Have there, Tom, have there been discussions with them or with the chiefs? Do you anticipate any issues dealing with the T in terms of the parking there and how they treat the facility?
So we've met with the MBTA on a couple of different ideas for, for projects up on the 3A corridor. We haven't talked to them specifically about this design yet, about this option yet, because, mainly because we don't have a design yet.
Sure.
And we don't know what we would want to do. But we've, we have relationships with them. I know the general manager and their assistant general manager. I know who I would work with directly, so.
And we, we had prior conversations with respect to other potential parcels. We did have conversations with the MBTA and the MBTA real estate consultants. And they were very supportive of the town's proposal. And frankly, were trying to help us identify potential MBTA land that could be made available to the town. And, you know, that didn't go anywhere because of, a lot of the MBTA-owned land is wet.
Yep.
But they were, they were supportive of a shipyard location at that point and supportive of the town's efforts in general.
Right. And just one more question for, I think it's just for Tom. I'm assuming that this new location is not in an area that's likely to be flooded. Because there's, I know there's a lot of work in terms of making sure that 3A, at least sections of 3A are protected from floods. Is this area, is this building in an area where flooding isn't likely to be an issue?
So part, a big part of the feasibility study will be to determine whether or not there are any roadblocks in the process. And that would certainly be one. But we'll, we'll look at that from an engineering perspective.
Or site improvements.
Rather than just me looking at them.
Right, right.
Or, or site improvements.
I understand. It's, it's not in a floodplain.
Right.
Right, okay.
Anything else? I would just add, and thank you to all three of you for your input as we've gone along through this process. You know, just as much as there's been a trend towards combined public safety facilities, there's also been a trend of municipalities in having senior centers that are reasonably sized for the senior population. And, you know, we haven't fit that bill for a really long time. We have 5,000 square feet and we have 7,300 seniors. And I would just punctuate Jennifer's excellent remarks, which is that right now, the space is limiting the programming. And, and to a very considerable degree. And that's not lost on us. The idea of tripling the space, and again, the design money will, the design and the feasibility will say, can this space work, I would just say, is, is equally important. Because all of these projects, the space has to work for the services it's providing. And, you know, as, as, the things that we're not providing, 31% of our community, is substantial. And that, that number will grow. So just as we're looking at not just building a fire station that meets the needs in the future, I think our board's same thought is, is the same with the senior center.
Okay. And on that note, I'd like to open it up to comments or questions from the audience. So what I'd ask you to do is actually come and join us at the podium up here, state your name and address for the record, and then we'll entertain your questions or comments. Yes, ma'am?
Do you want me to move over here?
Yeah, sorry.
Careful, the cords over there, too.
This is so that the viewing audience can hear all of you at home?
Okay, can you hear me?
I can.
I'm Jeannie Havilun, 30 Thaxton Street. I spent 60 years living on Beale Street property, so I am very much aware of all of the changes that have gone on. You're talking about a piece of property at 335 Lincoln Street, and I'm trying to place an undeveloped piece of property, or is there a development of some kind, a home or something on it?
So it's virtually undeveloped. There's a very small sales building that's located on the westerly side of the property, on the Waynes side of the property.
But the thing, if, if you were standing on the sidewalk and looking at the Fresh Market, the Fresh Market would be on your left, and this building would be either in front of you or to your right.
Okay, the stop-and-shop property, I believe, is 400 Beale Street. So I realize that 335 is on the opposite side of the road. Is it in the Shipyard property?
It's right along, you know what, I could, I could share this picture with you.
I can't hear you.
It's right along 3A, and it's right, as Joe, Joe's pointing out, it's right next to Fresh Market. Do you know the Fresh Market grocery store that's there in the Shipyard?
It's on 3A.
It's on 3A. Yep.
Take a trip over there tomorrow.
You'll see, you'll see some boats wrapped up. You'll see, it used, they used to, they used to sell boats there. It used to be Eastern Yacht Sales. So if you saw boats out there, and, and there were some boats that were out there for a mighty long time.
There's still some there now.
There's still some there.
Is this where the building, a 19 warehouse was?
No, just to the left.
Further down.
Further down.
Okay.
Careful on that cord.
Still going to take a trip there.
Yes.
Would you like my map? You can't believe I moved to Beale Street in 1906. And you can't believe it's soon to go to the H. C.
Can imagine.
Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you. Thank you for coming up. Ms. Sibber.
What's the cord doing?
Dawn Sibber, is it on? 3 King Philip Path, Hingham, Chair of the Hingham COA. So first of all, thank you. We were really happy to hear this, that you're embarking on this journey. I was late arriving, and I just have one question for you. Is parking part of this feasibility study, a review of the parking and re, so it is part of the whole...
So Mary just made it one.
I, I. So, I mean, I think, I think the building concept is wonderful. I hope it will work.
I hope it. But unless the parking is looked at and redesigned or whatever it needs. But I want to thank you from the Council on Aging. We've been talking for a long time. And I really appreciate your effort in moving this forward. So thank you.
We appreciate, appreciate your, your help with this as well. Further comments or questions with respect to the, yes, sir? Careful on the cord. It's a common refrain tonight.
My name is Philip Kawa. I live on 8 Beale Cove Road. I just have one question. This whole project depends on you acquiring the property of 335 Lincoln Street. And if that doesn't go through, nothing happens.
That's right.
Can you acquire that property by eminent domain?
So I could speak to that if you'd like. So there are a couple of options for the procurement of the property that we'll be dealing with through our real estate council and along the way. A friendly eminent domain taking is an option. We would have some, another option is, is a straight procurement through Chapter 30B. That would require a couple of other twists. But yes, it's an option. We would have to work through some of that, though. There's some contingencies.
So this board can't take anything. Town Meeting could authorize us to take. And so the, the reason we're doing it in these stages is typically, and I, I see folks in the audience that have volunteered on committees over the last several years, typically what we try to do is give Town Meeting some glimpse into what it might cost to build the final product. And so what we're doing here is saying, we want some, we want some funds to be able to think about what this might look like and what the costs associated with ultimately building the facility would be. So that when we go and ask for the purchase price of the property, people understand that if they buy that property, we are going to build this facility. And this facility will likely be in the magnitude of whatever the feasibility, the design comes back on. So the reason it's staged is with school projects, with other major capital projects, we, we try to get an understanding of what the ultimate cost is going to be before we ask Town Meeting to take a step that it can't step back from. And so that's, that's a little bit of what this dances.
I just want to know if you could do.
Yep, thank you.
I'd also just, to build on Karen's point, you know, this, this process is really, this is a town meeting decision. This is, this is your decision. Our, our role, similar to other appointed boards and, and elected boards and committees, is to put, is to put ideas forward for Town Meeting's consideration, to vet the proposals. If this board recommends favorable action, it then goes to our colleague committee. Their recommendation becomes the affirmative motion at Town Meeting. And then it's ultimately Town Meeting's decision to make. And we're borrowing for this. So a two-thirds vote is required at Town Meeting. So that's kind of the, the process that is, that, that, that this will follow.
So we're going to need you to keep showing up. Further comments or questions with respect to the public safety building and/or the senior center proposal this evening? Okay, seeing none. What we will do now is we will consider a motion, if my colleagues are ready, for a potential vote on the letter of intent. So this letter of intent, just to be clear with everybody, says to the property owner that this board will recommend to Town Meeting the process that we've described tonight, which is the request for feasibility... tonight, which is the request for feasibility money in the, in this town meeting cycle, and the potential for a special town meeting in the fall, where we would ask town meeting for the acquisition price. So, the property owner's saying, well, you know, if you don't get favorable action at this town meeting for the feasibility money, it's highly, highly unlikely you're going to buy this property, right? So tonight, all the letter of intent does is, sets up this process, and as Mary pointed out earlier, and Tom pointed out, us authorizing this letter of intent does not obligate the town to purchase the property.
That's right.
Any further questions from my colleagues with respect to the letter of intent? Questions from the public with respect to the letter of intent? I would take a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the letter of intent between 291 Mystic LLC and the Town of Hingham dated March 5th, 2020, for the purchase of the property located at 335 Lincoln Street in accordance with the terms and conditions of the letter of intent.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, well, step one, people. Okay, so we've got, thank you for, thank you for being here. Okay, so we've got a couple of warrant articles that we need to consider in order to put this question before town meeting. As Tom outlined to you, there's a warrant article that will ask for feasibility and design funds for a public safety building. Give you a, give you a minute. Thanks for being here, appreciate it. Good night. Drive safely home, everybody. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thanks for being here. Okay, so, none of this gets done unless we ask town meeting, so here we go. There are a series of warrant articles, the first of which requests feasibility and design funds for a public safety facility. Thank you. Why don't I read it, so we know what we're doing? So, Article NN, which will be numbered at town meeting, says, "Will the town vote to raise and appropriate borrow or transfer from available funds a sum of money for the purpose of determining the feasibility of locating a new public safety facility and for the conceptual design thereof to be located on a property notice 335 Lincoln Street, Hingham, Mass., or elsewhere, or act on anything related there too."
And this is approximately $250,000?
Yes.
Questions or comments? Questions or comments?
No, I, I'm good.
Questions or comments from the public with respect to the request for design and feasibility money from town meeting? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion. Oh, that's what I have to do, yeah. Sorry. Okay, it's all kinds of procedural, okay, the first thing I have to do is, so the warrant, and I, actually, I'm going to take a minute on this, the warrant closes on January 20th. 20th. We, we have actually had to open the warrant, and so that, that means the business of town meeting is established on January 20th, and it's really, really important because it lines up the public's expectations and the work of the advisory committee to move through a public process, to hear all the business that will come before town meeting. We try really, really hard not to open the warrant. It's not, in, in the grand scheme of things, not great practice. We had to open the warrant to fix a technical glitch in one of the warrant articles, didn't change the subject, substance of the article, didn't change the scheduling, but we needed to, to clarify a technical issue. We are opening it tonight, or we, we would vote to open it tonight because this is just a, a very special circumstance, and this is not ordinarily how the town strives to do business. So, with that introduction, do my colleagues have any comments or questions with respect to the request to open the warrant?
No.
Nope.
I would entertain a motion to open the warrant and then close it right up again.
I move to open the warrant and remove Article W, and insert Articles NN, OO, PP, and QQ, and then close the warrant.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so now, Article NN is properly before us. I understand we have no further comments or questions with respect to Article NN, so I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to recommend favorable action on Article NN.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the next article is a Public Safety Facility Building Committee. So this, you may recall from tuning into other capital projects, there was a fire station building committee that was established. We establish building committees with respect to our public schools. Anytime we're going to build a facility, we charge a group of town residents with the organization and administration of that construction process, along with appropriate staff and support from legal counsel and engineering and the like. So this would establish a Public Safety Facility Building Committee. Questions from my colleagues?
I, I would just note, for purposes of our advisory colleagues in the room, that while the article is general about the building committee, because that's how we put it together, we've actually had discussion and thoughts about the size of the committee and the appointing authority. We've tried to look back on past practices, so I'd encourage you to connect with Tom or Michelle as to sort of, you know, what we're thinking about that may just help in advancing these articles.
And the inclusion, along those same lines, the inclusion on an ex officio basis potentially of, you know, staff, like the police and fire chief.
And Jennifer.
For this one, well, yeah, right. Okay, anything further? I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to recommend favorable action on Article OO.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so the next is a request to town meeting for design funds for senior center renovations. So I actually have a question about this one, and I'm not sure whether it's, would be appropriate for us to change our motion or for the advisory committee to consider this. So I'll throw out what my question is, and that is, we've got all that space, Tom alluded in his presentation to, you know, the, the objective of this is to provide a senior center facility that fits the senior center program. That is the priority. The question for me is, if there's ancillary space there, or a little bit of space that we might use for the schools, that also should be part of the design, I just want to be sure that whatever town meeting approves would encompass kind of those ancillary, smaller uses of the space that's there. I don't want to take away or detract from the fact that the goal here is just what we've talked about tonight, but I also want to make sure that town meeting empowers us to, to undertake feasibility consideration and design of that space that might accommodate other municipal uses that are appropriate in, in that area. So, I don't know whether our motion should do that, or, I'm looking at my, Ed, do you have a, yeah, that'd be great if you don't mind. Been sitting for a long time. The senior center has some exercise class.
Ed Gatos, 89 BlackRock, and I'm also on the advisory committee and representing this article before the advisory committee tomorrow. By the way, excellent overview, very, very helpful.
Thank you.
I, I think we can add in to both the comment and the recommendation that we simply expand the, the purview, if you will, of this particular article to include ancillary spaces.
Okay.
I don't think, I don't think we need to change the warrant article itself.
Okay.
At least, that's my understanding of the role of the recommendation, so long as it doesn't change the fundamental nature.
Right.
Of the.
I would agree with that.
Of the article, I think we could.
So I guess my only concern is, you're here, you're hearing me, I don't know where my colleagues are in this, but I just want to make sure that we have the flexibility to do what needs to be done in that space. And so I guess I'd appreciate you, as you've done with the other articles that you've reported on to the advisory committee, reflect that in your discussion of what might be included in the recommended motion.
Right, and you're referring to just the space occupied by the police department, first and second floor?
I think so, yeah. My only thought, selectmen Johnson, is that this, you're adding this now, you have the flexibility, it's before you, to eliminate any question. It can't hurt for you to submit the article that you want them to consider.
Okay. I just want to make sure, though, that, I, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to divert from what the priority is.
Understood.
I just don't want to lock us into.
And the other thing I would say is, I said at the outset of my presentation, was, it was an evolutionary process. I didn't know I was talking about a couple of minutes later, but I would suggest that we move that design money figure from 450 to 500 if we're going to include, if we're going to include some, some architectural concepts of what that additional space on the second floor might best be used for.
Did you have language that you?
Well, so I was going to say something like this, but I, I'm wondering about some sort of modifier, qualifier in it. So I might say something like, so the QQ reads, "Will the town raise and appropriate borrow or transfer from available funds a sum of money to be expended by the Board of Selectmen to be used for any expenses related to design and engineering services for renovations," and then it goes on to say, "The senior center in Town Hall." And so I was thinking of saying something like, to design, related to design and engineering services for renovations to Town Hall relating to the senior center and other municipal uses, or something like that.
And other ancillary uses of available space.
And other ancillary uses, yeah.
Freed up by the departure of the fire department or police department.
You know, a suggestion I have, because I don't want to convey in any way, I think we're all in agreement that this is, the senior center is driving this, and I don't want to.
That's right.
Convey anything. Could we just say for renovations to the senior center, something like?
Well, it's not really, it's not really renovations to the senior center, because we're renovating Town Hall. The, the police, we're renovating that portion of Town Hall currently occupied by the police department.
So it would be for renovations to the senior center and the current space, and, and the space currently occupied by the police department in Town Hall, or act or anything related there too. And I think that.
Because it would be both.
Yeah. Because you're just focusing on the space.
Right, because we're not renovating the rec center right now, that's not what this is intended to address.
Renovations.
So for renovation, design and engineering services.
To the senior center and space currently occupied by the police station.
Yes.
And, and we're not, I guess, we're, we're talking about the senior center space and the police department space, and we're not dictating a particular use of that space. Is that the way you would read that?
Yes.
Okay. All right, can you say it again?
So why don't I, why don't I take one of your handwritten versions, so make sure I got it.
And you can get something official tomorrow.
Maybe not mine.
So we'd read, "Will the town raise and appropriate borrow or transfer from available funds a sum of money to be expended by the Board of Selectmen to be used for any expenses related to design and engineering services for renovations to the senior center in Town Hall and the space currently occupied by the police department, or act on anything relating there too."
Great.
So.
Does that answer your concerns, Mary?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay.
Thanks, Ed.
So I would move to recommend favorable action on Article QQ as amended.
Second, just a question, Tom. I believe in the presentation it said 475.
Oh, is that what it said?
Are you recommending?
I would say 525, then.
425.
I would add another 50 grand, just to.
Let me just.
It is 475, you're correct.
You're right.
So, are you proposing 525?
Yes.
Okay.
And I'll be at AdCom tomorrow night to clarify all this, when Ed and Nancy prompt me.
Okay.
We can revise the.
Yeah.
Okay, second.
Any further discussion? Yes? Can you join us at the podium? Sure.
Bathrolo, 14 Prospect Street, and I served on the Council on Aging with Dawn, and also served with Barbara, so I was on the council from 2012 to 2018, and I also work in the field of gerontology. So, I just have seen this trend in recent years of collaboration between the senior centers and recreation, like what's happening in some of the towns in Massachusetts, and more widely in other parts of the country. So is the recreation definitely set aside for this project? It sounds like it is, but I'm just wondering, you know, if things get delayed for any reason and the community gets more involved in this effort, in other towns that I've done research in, it often does get to the table that the age segregation piece wants to get reduced, and, you know, is there potential to create sort of a wellness center, or like a community-wide center? So, I'm just wondering if by completely taking recreation off, is that taking that opportunity off?
I don't, I don't think we're doing that. I think what we're trying to do, what, I think what, what we were trying to get our arms around was, what is the space we're talking about in Town Hall? So the space we're talking about using these design funds for would include the space that the senior center, center is currently housed in, as well as the police department. I will say, to your point, it's not more widely, the focus of these design funds is not more widely across the Town Hall functions. So we're not, we're not at this juncture asking for money that might change the layout of the current recreation aspect here at Town Hall. I think what we're doing is saying, in this corner of the building, we can, we can use this money to do whatever we, we want in that space, primarily for the senior center. Okay. And, and, but if, if what comes out of that is, you know, this notion of an integrated wellness program, you know, I think we'd have another opportunity to go back to town, to town meeting and ask for that. Okay. But this is just, I think the first step in the process is to take the space that we know we have. Right. And figure out what we might want to do with it. But I think you've heard from all of us tonight that the program really needs to, to drive the design, and not the physical plan. So, thank you for your comments.
Thanks.
Okay.
Do we vote on it?
No, there's a motion on the table for favorable action on Article QQ. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Senior Center Building Committee. So does this need to, does this need to have the same modification, you think? Because it could be, like, I, I would view this committee as doing, as taken, as being in charge of that whole space, so I, I sort of think it should say the same thing.
Here's my, the, the only concern I would have is, I don't want a building committee to take this in a different direction. And, you know, we've, it's taken us a really long time to get here, and this is about, this is about building out and expanding the senior center. I really want to make sure the committee focuses on that, and we don't start diverging into other possibilities that could slow things down. I want to make sure that they have the authority to do what we're asking, but I want to be really clear at what this is, because we have a short window.
I, I don't disagree with that, but I also feel like we can't, we've got to, if we're going to go to town meeting and get permission, we need to, we need to be able to deal with the space. We need, we need the, we're, we're asking for money to do this, and so to me, the committee needs to match up with what we're asking them.
And, and maybe my, just thinking about this, maybe my concerns can be addressed in a committee charge.
In the comment.
Well, and, and in the comment as well.
So, I guess I would say we need to, we need to say the same thing. Renovation of the senior center located at Town Hall.
And space currently occupied by the police.
And the space currently occupied by the police department. And again, I think that, I think that focuses on the space, and then to your point, Mary, between the comment and the charge to the committee.
Yep.
We're going to tell, you know, you'll tell them, here's your task, right?
Yeah, although this, to me, was a little different, because to the extent that it turns out that we want to use a portion of the space for school purposes, that would really be in a different committee that would figure out how it should be integrated with what's going on on the third floor.
Maybe, maybe. I mean, we're, we're telling, we're, we're asking for money to do this.
Right.
I, I don't know.
Okay, I now see what you're saying.
And this, we're talking about the space.
Right.
So, you know, you're right, if the committee, if, if we design this whole thing and there's like an extra.
Right.
Space that might be used for a conference room or something.
Right.
You know, I think you're right, we would.
Yep.
Reach out to the schools to make sure it's part of their program.
So. So what I'm hearing is that Article PP would read, and I don't think we need to change the name of the committee.
No, neither.
"Will the town vote to establish a senior center building committee for the purpose of overseeing the design, engineering, and renovation of the senior center located 224, or actually, of the senior center and the space currently occupied by the police department located at 224 Central Street."
Yep.
Second.
Any further discussion? We've confused you all.
So, so I move to recommend favorable action on Article PP.
As revised.
As revised.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And then Article W, so we've already removed Article W, so we don't need to vote that, Tom?
That's right.
It's been removed.
So Article W, just so you know, was an article that was asking for design and engineering services to do a moderate renovation to the senior center. And while we will continue to allocate capital dollars to do modest improvements there, it's not, it's not this. That's out.
Do you want to do D?
Let's do D. Article D is the report of the Personnel Board. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. So our hard-working Personnel Board undertakes all the collective bargaining for the town, reviews our salary classification structure, and this article provides the funds to pay the financial, the financial obligations of the town relating to those things, including fringe benefits, reclassifications for non-school department employees. The report of the Personnel Board will also make certain amendments to the Personnel Bylaw, including the classification and salary plan. It's actually, I know it may not sound all that exciting, you know, as Mary and Joe have both alluded to from time to time, we're a personnel-intensive business, so to have a fair wage and classification system and, and a modern Personnel Bylaw is actually pretty critical to the town, to be able to hire the personnel that we need to undertake the services that, that we all depend on. So, any discussion from my colleagues with respect to the report of the Personnel Board?
Nope.
You know, I just want to take this opportunity to thank the members of the Personnel Board. These are five dedicated citizens who work tireless hours negotiating all of the collective bargaining agreements for the town. This is a considerable effort, and in particular, this past year and earlier this year, we saluted Marie Harris for her great work. We welcome Courtney Orwig to the Personnel Board. This group somehow, in many ways, is kind of behind the scenes, but they are so crucial to making our town operate effectively. So we thank them.
Questions for the public with respect to the Personnel, report of the Personnel Board? Hearing none, I would take a motion.
I recommend favorable action on Article D.
Second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Mr. Reardon has joined us. We are actually not going to be considering, right, we are withdrawing?
We are, but I wanted to speak to it to both the Selectmen and to the public, because we were here last Tuesday.
If you could very briefly, that'd be great.
So I will do that briefly. Bill Reardon, Chairman of the Harbor Development Committee. The Selectmen are well aware, last Tuesday, I was here to review and, and recommend Article O to repair and reconstruct Town Pier. That day, as some will remember, we received some new numbers, dramatically higher numbers for the repair work and reconstruction work and resiliency. And I had not had an opportunity, I don't know whether I referred to that, because we just received it that afternoon, just as you had. I had not had a chance to meet with my committee, and you didn't vote, and we hadn't voted. Secondly, and most, more importantly, on Friday, after Town Hall had closed, a letter was received from the consulting engineer that the town has retained to act during this time when we don't have an engineering department. And he issued a letter, speaking first to the costs and, and kind of acknowledging that for what was designed, they were, they were appropriate, but as to the proposed height, he had some different perspective. He was bringing some, some different experience into, into the mix. And he made a firm recommendation, which Bills and Thomas had really not done, in part because we didn't ask them to, in a sense. Bills and Thomas felt they could not recommend. It really was the town that needed to make the judgments about the balance between aesthetics and cost and safety. This engineer chose to do some, a different tack, but all of that information was received Friday, digested over the weekend. This afternoon at 1:00, the Harbor Development Committee met for the first time since all this new information came together, listened, and concluded that there was just too much information now coming in. It was new, it needed a lot of attention. I think you all have a sense of how complex these decisions are, and it's, it's not something to be done on such short notice. So the conclusion was that we would ask, I think the, the article is, is written that you had submitted it, we had originally submitted it to you, so we are recommending that we not proceed with Article O at this time. It's too big a project, it's too important to get it right. I must, I will have to emphasize reluctantly, do we make this motion? Because this is the end of a five-year process already, maybe the last two focused very much on design and permitting. We do see the advantage that by deferring, we will now have within a month or so, our own town engineer for the first time since last April, May. And that's important. We've, we've clearly had a bit of an arm behind our backs in not having that kind of relationship through, through this year. So we, we see that that's, that will be a real plus. I only, I only just want to emphasize that the importance of addressing these wharves does not disappear. The danger here is, we, we really lose a lot of time, both in terms of availability of funding, simply momentum. And, and as always in, in town, these are, these issues are difficult. So lots of work to do. The committee is anxious to, to meet, and will, will want to meet, Tom, very, very soon with our new town engineer as much as possible, but I, I did want the Selectmen, and particularly the public, who might have expected, based on paper, newspaper reports, that we would be proceeding with asking for construction funds. We're not able to do that. Good and valid reasons not to do that, and, you know, I'm, I'm comfortable with that, and my committee is, is fully on board. It was a unanimous vote.
It's good to know.
Just wanted to share with you.
And if you don't mind, I just wanted to thank, Pat Brennan is here, our, our new consulting engineer, who provided this review. I just wanted to thank him for his time and efforts, and I think it was informative and will ultimately result in, in the right process.
Well, and Bill, I mean, I, I know how disappointed you must be. I think we're, we're disappointed as well, but it's a significant investment by the town in its infrastructure. I think there were questions about, you know, grant availability and how that might match up with the design that we're choosing. You know, I think it did strike, strike all of us that there were questions that we need to really bring to ground before we, you know, put this forward to town meeting for its consideration. But I, I, first of all, would like to thank you and the Harbor Development Committee, because it's been a long haul. I think you are, and, and your efforts have put the town on the forefront of trying to be shovel-ready with these projects, and hopefully this next cycle, you know, we will have the information that we need to really present, I think, a, a fulsome proposal with, to the town without, you know, maybe the variables that we would have going into it.
That's the, that's the intent.
Joe, questions, comments?
So I think not moving forward should not convey a lack of urgency, because this is something that the town needs to address, and I think you've, you've educated us and members of the public about the urgency of this. And I agree with Karen that hopefully we can put the package together sooner rather than later. And I, I know that you have literally been operating with a hand tied behind your back because of changes in engineering. And hopefully that is addressed now, and that we can move forward. So thank you.
We've talked a few times in this warrant article season about putting the right solution before town meeting, and the importance of all of us being able to stand behind it, and how important that is. Your committee did that today, and it wasn't easy. And I agree with everything my colleagues have said, particularly about the urgency of solving this. We, it's a serious, important public safety issue. We got to get it right. And we want to make sure that we're ready to take the best solution to town meeting. So thank you.
I agree.
All agreed.
Good.
Thank you.
And Mr. Brennan, since he's here, I just think that you have provided invaluable services, not only to the Harbor Development Committee, but I know other departments across the town, and we've really appreciated your advice and counsel, and, and in particular on this very, very significant investment in question before the town. So I know sometimes it's not easy to hear this, but I also think we try to act as responsibly as possible, and, and that information was critical, I think, to the full analysis of this question. So thank you. Questions from the public with respect to the Sewall project? Okay.
So I would suggest you vote, open and withdraw. I know we don't like to open, but that was the language we used in the last vote at the beginning.
That's what I was going to ask, okay.
It can't hurt to do that. I don't know that it's necessary, but where it was your article, I think you, for consistency's sake.
So I think maybe just do the same thing we did. We'll, we'll open, we'll vote, we'll vote to open, remove, and close, all the same. Okay, you got the.
So I move to open the warrant and remove Article O and close the warrant.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I've never opened and closed a warrant so many times. It's driving me crazy. Thank you, thanks for being here, Bill. Okay.
Thank you, Bill.
Appointments this evening? Seeing none. Town Administrator and Selectmen reports. Michelle?
Nothing, thank you.
Tom?
No, thank you, not tonight.
Joe?
Mary? Just two things. Tomorrow night, I'm going to be going to the Cohasset Board of Selectmen to give them an update on the water company transition. We appreciate the invitation from the Board and the Town Administrator. And Thursday, if, depending on whether or not we have a meeting Thursday, if we do not, I will be going to the Plymouth County Advisory Board meeting, typically around this time of year. Plymouth County has a couple of kind of procedural votes with, sort of a couple of reserve fund transfers, if you will, to close out the year. There was a, an emergency repair to a facility in Wareham that's necessary, and also, and I, I spoke to Tom O'Brien and Frank Basler today. When Plymouth County negotiated its labor contract with the workforce, it was actually for a 0% increase with the understanding that if Plymouth County revenues exceeded a certain level, that would be revisited. The good news, thanks to the, the great work of the staff and the Plymouth County Commissioners, is that a $400,000 surplus is expected this year, so the proposal to the Advisory Board is a 2% salary increase for the union employees, which represents about $80,000. So I, I spoke to those, again, I spoke to Mr. O'Brien and Mr. Basler. If, you know, unfortunately with the Plymouth County, a Board, a member of the Board of Selectmen has to attend, we can't send a designate.
Yep.
So, anyway, if, if the meeting, I'm aware of what's on the agenda, I'm comfortable with the actions taking place. If we're not meeting Thursday, you know, I'll be there in person.
So we, maybe we could talk about, if you, if you feel it's important to be there, maybe we could talk about the timing of our meeting? Like if we move it, I know sometimes it's hard for you, hard for all of us to get here early, but if we could move it up, maybe we could talk about those logistics and see if you think it's important.
So I would, I would need to be down in Plymouth at 7:00, which means leaving here like 6:15, 6:20. I think for us, voting budgets, I, I think not attending this Plymouth Advisory Board is okay.
Okay.
I, I don't think these will be controversial votes, because the Advisory Board was prepped on what was taking place. It's not unexpected.
Okay. I mean, I know that.
Thank you for offering.
Well, no, but I know you've also brought some fiscal discipline to that, so I, I know. I don't want him to be down there like, okay.
I think they'll be a little relieved that my seat's empty.
Okay, well, let's, let's make sure that that's what you want to do.
No, no, thank you for asking, but I'm, I'm good.
Okay. And I just, once again, first of all, I'd like to thank all the folks for showing up tonight. Really, it was so nice to come in here and, and see a full room of people. You know, I realize this process is going to take some time, but it is something that we've all been working on really, really hard, you know, over the long haul, and our colleagues before us were working on trying to come up with solutions, and as Joe said, you know, when this opportunity presented itself, we really pushed on it to try to make our, put ourselves in a position to take advantage of it. And that doesn't happen without kind of a lot of behind-the-scenes work and continued work to evaluate the pros and cons of the options that we have before us. And then in particular tonight, you know, Mary, you alluded to it, Tom, Michelle, you put together just a really wonderful presentation on very complex and wide-ranging topic, and I think that it's really helpful to have it, to see, be able to see it visually, to be able to share the information on the website. So I really, really appreciate it. This is a, you know, I think a really exciting opportunity for us, and to, again, build some support for what will be a very significant ask of town meeting. I think that your presentation lays that foundation. So I thank you both for your good work on that.
Thank you.
And anything further? Otherwise, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Good night, everybody.